This is for good evening.
Yeah. Good evening and welcome to the Heartland Township Planning Commission meeting of November 6th. We'd like to begin with the Fledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every being of us.
Commissioner Hopkins, would you like to take the floor, please?
Commissioner Voight?
Here.
Commissioner Murphy?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Grissom is absent. Commissioner Hopkins here. Commissioner Newsome?
Here.
Sheriff Person fact?
Here.
The former of the planning commission and also present township planning director Dave Campbell.
Okay, next up, item 4A, which is approval of our November 6th meeting agenda.
I move to approve the meeting agenda for November 6th, 2014. As submitted.
Support. We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Newsome, a second from Commissioner Voight. Are there any changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those aye motion carries. We have no meeting minutes to approve this evening. Call to the public. Anybody wish to say anything this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to item 7A. This is a public hearing for the zoning ordinance amendment number 76-5, application number 358. And what we'll do tonight is after we open the public hearing, we'll have our planning directors' comments, public comments, if there are any, we'll close the public hearing and then the planning commission can have a discussion and/or questions with our planning director. So let's open the public hearing at 7:03 PM for the applicant Heartland Township, zoning amendment application number 358, with the proposed zoning ordinance amendment 76-5A through D addressing the following issues. 76-5A, clarify signage for home occupations. 76-5B, allow portable temporary business signs in the LC and STR districts. 76-5C, add provisions for donor recognition signs. And 75, or 76-5D, add sign option allowing for identification of an agricultural or farm operation. And for the record, all public notice requirements for this public hearing have been met. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to our planning director, David Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the, we've had a series of discussions with the planning commission and with the ordinance review subcommittee over these four proposed amendments to section 5.26 of the zoning ordinance. Section 5.26 is the regulations and standards and approval procedures for signs in the township. This whole conversation started at the township board level around this time, or even maybe a little bit earlier last year, when our township board was developing their strategic plan for 2014. And one of the items on the strategic plan was to look at some possible changes to our sign regulations and these four, changes in these four areas in particular. The planning commission and the township board had an opportunity to have a joint meeting in April 2014 to further discuss what these possible changes may be and the procedure to make it happen. The planning department and the township hosted a public input session on the morning of April, what was it, 29th, where we invited commercial business owners and anyone else who may be interested in our sign regulations to come and have an opportunity to discuss with us their thoughts on what we very preliminarily were thinking about working on. And then throughout the spring and the summer, we had a series of meetings, I don't even know how many there were at this point, with our ordinance review committee. And we discussed each of these, these four areas of sign amendments. Some of those discussions led to policy discussions that we then kind of kicked up to the township board and to the planning commission and got some direction and then brought them back to the subcommittee level. The planning commission has seen the proposed text of these four amendments that the ordinance review committee has worked with the planning department to come up with. We saw that back in September when this public hearing was set and at at least one meeting in August. So this is, point being that this is some amendments that have been given a great deal of thought and consideration at this level, at the subcommittee level, at the board level, with staff. And when the planning commission saw the draft amendments back in September, they felt that they were in good enough shape to be ready for a public hearing, and that public hearing is this evening. When these proposed amendments were discussed at the planning commission in September, there were a few relatively minor changes. Some of them were just typos or grammatical type stuff. Some of them were a little more significant, but staff has made those changes and is ready to discuss them tonight. As I've mentioned, there are amendments to four specific areas. One has to do with signage for home occupations. One has to do with signage for portable and temporary signs in our limited commercial and settlement village commercial areas, specifically the Heartland Village area and the Partialville area. There's new, an amendment proposed for donor recognition signs at public and quasi-public locations, such as museums and churches and the music hall and any place that is something of a public facility that may want to recognize its donors when those donors help them with a renovation project, putting on a new roof or putting on a fresh coat of paint or whatever it may be. Well, more than a fresh coat of paint, something more significant that requires a building permit. But we want to have, those uses have an opportunity to recognize the groups and the businesses and the contractors that have donated time and material to make those renovations possible. And then the fourth area of sign regu, a sign amendment is for agricultural uses. Right now, the zoning ordinance is pretty limited on what it allows for signage on a farm operation. And so there's new, what is being proposed is new regulations that provide some standards for an identification sign at a farm or an agricultural business. As I've already mentioned, the planning commission has seen these a number of times, but I'm happy to go through them for the benefit of the public and our large audience watching at home. The regulations for a home occupation, which is amendment 76-5A, has, the zoning ordinance right now allows home occupations and then states that home occupations are allowed signage, but it isn't specific enough on what that signage that they allow, they would be allowed would be. This proposed amendment provides what those standards would be. And it would allow for a limited amount of signage, either on the building or a sign in a window in most residential zoning districts. And then in the CA, the Conservation Agricultural Zoning District, the home occupation would be allowed to have a freestanding sign in the front yard. This would give those permitted home occupations opportunity to identify themselves and on a limited basis so that we continue to preserve the residential nature of these types of uses. That's the whole intent behind a home occupation is that it's still a person's home and that the home is still the primary use and that they're running, running a business as an accessory to that use. And so in order to maintain that residential character and not turn it into a commercial type of operation, we're proposing a limited amount of identification signage. I'll pause there to see if there's any questions, comments, suggestions on that one. 76-5B is an allowance for portable signs in our LC and STR zoning districts. And those zoning districts, again, are located within the Heartland Village area and then in our Partialville Settlement area. In general, Heartland Township does not allow temporary or portable signs. There's some exceptions to that, but generally we limit the amount of those types of signs that we allow. This proposed amendment would allow a sandwich board sign or a pedestal sign in front of the commercial businesses within those zoning districts with certain limits and certain parameters on the size of the sign and the design of the sign and where it can be located and when it can be displayed. The intent here is a recognition that the Heartland Village area and the Partialville Settlement area are a different commercial dynamic than along, say, the M-59 corridor. The Heartland Village area is meant to be pedestrian friendly and meant to be more of the downtown of Heartland. And as we've all talked about, most of the downtowns that we can all agree are downtowns that are ones to emulate typically allow these types of signs out front of the businesses, letting the people know what the specials are at a restaurant or things like that or if there's live music that night, you know, who's playing. And so we want to provide that allowance within these zoning districts. Another key consideration here is that in these zoning districts, a lot of times the buildings come up to, right up to the sidewalk, and so they don't have the front yard to put their own permanent freestanding sign like you would see along the M-59 corridor. And so this would be an opportunity to give those businesses that opportunity to get their message out there via these tastefully designed freestanding portable signs located in front of the business. I will again pause on that one and see if there's any discussion there. 76-5C is an allowance for donor recognition signs. This started as a discussion with the Deering Museum. They had a renovation project last summer and in order to recognize all the contractors who donated their time and/or materials to make that renovation happen, they put up a sign doing as much, recognizing and thanking those contributors. That sign is not necessarily permitted in the zoning ordinance, but what it started the discussion of is, well, should we find a way to allow such a sign? Is that a reasonable sign to have? And if so, what should the reasonable standards be to go with a sign like that? These proposed amendments, the proposed amendments is those reasonable standards. It limits the size of the sign, the location of the sign, the duration that it can be displayed. It has to be in conjunction with a active construction or renovation project for which a building permit is, has been issued. The sign is allowed to be displayed while construction is going on and for six months after that, but up to no more than 18 months. And then there's a limit to, once that sign comes down, the next one can't go up until six months after that. And those would be allowed for public and quasi-public type uses. As I mentioned, the museum, the library, the music hall, the churches, places like that where donors might be interested in contributing to a construction or renovation project. Along with that, the second tier of that is donor recognition signs in public parks. And the idea there would be to allow a permanent structure within the parks on which donor recognition signs could be added and taken away on an annual basis. So if Heartland Township wanted to have a sign in one of our two new parks, recognizing commercial businesses that wanted to contribute to the park, this proposed amendment would provide allowances to do so. And it provides standards for where such a sign could be located and again, how tall and how long. And in this case, since there would be a structure that would remain permanently, then there's also requirements for the landscaping around that structure. And that's the intent with that one.
Again, I'll see if there's any questions there.
Donor recognition, we're doing no telephone numbers on a sign, correct?
That's correct. We do have language that says that while we want an opportunity to recognize the donors, it's not intended to be a commercial sign where you would necessarily be advertising for the donors. And kind of the distinction there is, yes, we want to recognize Joe's Roofing Company, but we don't necessarily want to put up Joe's Roofing Company's website or their phone number because that then gets into more of a commercial message and less of a recognition message. And then finally, 76-5D is some standards for, an allowance for agricultural signs. And this would be limited to our agricultural zoning districts, the rural residential district and the CA zoning district, allowing for a freestanding sign with standards for how tall, how big, how far off the property line, and some standards that say it has to be of a certain design and a certain quality. But it does not necessarily have to be a monument sign like we would require for a commercial sign in a commercial zoning district. But it does have to be something of a quality sign, up to a maximum of 32 square feet. Any questions on that one? So as you'll see in the planning department's memo dated October 28th, there is a, if the planning commission so chooses to forward this on to the township board with a recommendation for approval, there's some proposed motion language to do so. Remind you that anytime there's a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance, after the planning commission makes their formal recommendation, then the next step is to take those proposed amendments to the Livingston County Planning Departments and have their staff do an advisory review. And then they send that on to the Livingston County Planning Commission, where the commission does an advisory review. Their comments come back to us and we provide those comments, along with the planning commission's comments, to the township board, who ultimately make a decision to adopt any proposed amendment, at which point we notice it in the newspaper and it becomes our new zoning ordinance.
Okay. Now, as part of a public hearing, if anybody in the public would like to make any comments, this is your time. And as our planning director mentioned many times, lack of discussion up here hasn't been for lack of interest. There's been a lot of time, a lot of meetings spent on this. So this document or these changes, this wording is very familiar to all of us, so the lack of conversation is only due to our familiarity, not lack of interest.
It's had a lot of scrutiny.
A lot. So since we have no public comment, what I'd like to do is close the public hearing at 7:16. And now ask the planning commission one last time here. Any questions, comments, anything you'd like to add?
So there was some questions at the last meeting about consistency and use of a term "natural grade" and things like that on one of the signs, so that's all been addressed.
Yes, I can speak to that. You're correct, that last time the term "natural grade" was used. We have adjusted that to say the average grade, and that's not, for the sake of semantics. If you look at our specific sign standards and more particularly those for sign height, for monument signs, it speaks to, the height of the sign shall be measured from the average grade to the uppermost point of the sign. And then it goes on to say, average grade shall be measured 50 feet along the front parallel, so on and so on. It gives you a pretty detailed description of what average grade means. And so we have used the term "average grade" within these proposed amendments as they pertain to the agricultural signs, the donor recognition signs, and the home occupation signs, so that if any applicant says, well, what does average grade mean? We can refer very easily to another section of the ordinance that says, here's what average grade means. And it's pretty straightforward.
Anything else? Planning commission's pleasure. Would you like to make a recommendation on this this evening?
I'm ready.
We're ready to entertain a motion.
I move to recommend adoption of zoning ordinance amendment number 76-5A through D, application number 358, an amendment to section 5.26, signs of the Heartland Township zoning ordinance, as contained in the attachments.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion to recommend adoption or approval from Commissioner Voight, a second from Commissioner Mitchell. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those aye motion carries. Next up would be item 8A. This is a 2015 comprehensive plan amendment, residential and settlement area policy discussion. And I'd like to turn it over to Dave.
So the planning commission had a joint meeting with the township board last month. And one of the focuses of that meeting was the comprehensive plan update that the planning commission has started work on. We are hoping to work through this, through these next five, six months and have something ready for review by our neighboring jurisdictions in the March to April timeframe. What the intent of this amendment is, is to take the future land use plan and the future land use map that were adopted by the township in 2011 and, per good planning practice, take a fresh look at it. You should look at something like that every five years or so and see if there's any updates necessary. Aiding the township in this process is a residential market analysis that the township had done by a professional consultant to provide the township with guidance on what the market is for new housing in Heartland Township, who's looking, what are they looking for, how much are they willing to spend? Are they looking for single family? Are they looking for attached? Are they looking to rent? Are they looking to own? And the consultant provided that report with a lot of, a lot of specific details and a lot of quantification of their findings. And so knowing that, now it's the role of the planning commission and then ultimately the township board to say, does our 2011 future land use plan and future land use map with respect to residential planning, is it consistent with what the market is demanding? In other words, does our future land use plan provide the opportunities to develop the type of residential housing that the current market demands? And so that's the role of the planning commission to start taking a look at that. And what we hope to do tonight is we provided an excerpt of the 2011 future land use plan, and particularly an excerpt of the residential development policies and the settlement area development policies. And where we want to start is determine whether those policies that were developed and adopted in 2011, are they still applicable in 2014 and then to 2015? So in your packets, we've provided that excerpt of those residential policies. We've also provided a copy of the housing market analysis. And we've tried to highlight certain sections of that analysis that may or may not be of use in this discussion. But what we as a planning department hope to hear tonight is whether the planning commission feels that these policies require any changes, any updates, does anything need to be added? Does anything need to be taken away? And if we can decide that tonight, then hopefully we as a staff can come back to this planning commission at our next meeting with those proposed changes. So I hope everybody has had an opportunity to read them and come with some thoughts. I know I have a few of my own that I'm happy to share either now or once everybody else has had an opportunity to. But that's what this is tonight, is a discussion item. Are these policies still our policies moving forward?
So Dave, my question is on the residential development policies, which is the copy labeled page six.
Yes.
Would that be all residential designations?
Other than those in the settlement area.
Yeah.
They have their own. And, and, yes, they would.
Yeah, it's kind of the estate, the medium, it's the law, it's all of it.
Yes, yes. There's also, what's not included, the reason it jumps from page six to page eight, is because page seven is the commercial development policies. And that's not what the intent of this update to our future land use plan is. The intent is to focus on the residential side of things, which is why we're talking about, as you say, the residential development policies and the settlement area development policies.
Yeah. Well, then I guess I do have just a couple of comments for discussion, whatever. Item four, which is street trees should be provided within residential developments. I don't know if I think that's totally appropriate in every type of residential district or category. I mean, you wouldn't see street trees in typical subdivisions of, you know, the estate residential, for example. But I certainly would expect it in most of those developments along 59. So I don't know if there are ways to designate that a little differently or it doesn't need to be there. Or maybe I'm the only one that feels that.
Well, I guess maybe that would be where I'd start. If there's agreement on that, we could add some verbiage saying, "street trees should be provided with residential developments, particularly medium to high density developments." Or, you know, you can say things where appropriate.
The thing that, so a state residential is the large, like three acres, isn't it?
Yeah.
So the thing that I think that separates, that separates us for me is subdivisions with sidewalks. When you have a sidewalk, it seems like it calls out for street trees. If it doesn't have a sidewalk, I don't think it's as natural to see street trees. So I don't know if that's something we could look at as a method for defining that.
Well, and I, if you agree. Yeah, well, and I would add to that that Meadowview Estates is an example, does not have sidewalks, and I don't think street trees would look appropriate in there. So maybe that is.
Keep in mind, this isn't the ordinance, right? And it just says it should. And these are just a set of guidelines, so.
But these are visions, these are.
No, it's not the ordinance.
A simple verbiage like Dave mentioned, you know, "where applicable" or "if desirable" or something like that, I think is a good qualifier for that statement.
And that could be what it is. I just didn't want to end up, somebody were to come in in some of these, you know, and start proposing subdivisions with one to two acres even. I'm going to question that we're going to really want to have those in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree with that, that, and maybe more towards Larry's idea that if there are sidewalks, that would be more of the opportunity, that would look more appropriate. But in the areas where there's, you know, large parcels, acreage, I think just for someone to have to add trees, I think it's situational. And maybe the sidewalks as a suggestion.
So the other thing that I have some question about that I think warrants a little bit of discussion is open space and parks should be included with an all-new residential development. I don't, again, I don't know that this is always, I mean, open space, yeah. But and parks, I mean, sometimes it gets to be, the homeowners association, it's, I don't know if burden's the right word, but the organization has a tough time just, you know, managing their own existence. And then if we're making their maintenance costs too high, you know, because we're making them put in parks, I just wonder how people feel about that.
Is, rather than saying parks is, using a term like, say, recreational amenities, is that maybe something less than a park perhaps? Nature trails or, you know, gazebos looking out at the, you know, the detention pond, things like that? I guess I'm just throwing that out there. Is recreational amenity or some other verbiage like that maybe less than that?
User-friendly open space.
The usable open space.
Usable open space, yeah, something like that.
I guess, it seems like a determination should be also made. If this open space, that's a park that you have to maintain, that you have to cut, that if there's trails that you have to put cedar chips down or such, compared to space, you might just want to leave wild, you know, leave his fields or leave his woods. Maybe it's not called a park then?
Well, I'm not even convinced that it has to be defined as usable. Why can't it just be open space and determined?
Well, open space can be usable, right? You can come, they can come with proposals saying, you know, we're just going to leave it open. Let nature take over and everybody's going to enjoy it. So it's usable to the community, right?
Okay, okay.
That's right. Usable, but it's not a park, there's no maintenance required.
Right, right.
It's, you know, usable if they want to develop, you know, sporting or leisure activities on it, by all means go ahead, but it's not necessary. So whatever qualifies as usable.
I think the word "park" probably throws.
Yes.
A picture in our mind of what that means. I had that, I had the and park circled going. I don't know about this park thing. So I'm in agreement with what's being said. I don't know if you could get by and just say, open space should be included.
Yeah, I think that would be fine.
Because if they choose to go in and do extra things beyond, they may come back and say, well, that could be some type of benefit to allowing our development to go. You didn't require a playground or tennis courts, that's part of our community thing. But if it was rolling through a PD process or something. But I just wonder if you could just get by with, open space should be included and call it good. I think there are some people that would prefer to look at nice open fields and woods and not have it touched. And that wouldn't be a park, by my picture of what a park is.
So.
And maybe it's not really usable.
Maybe the word should be considered instead of included. Because included, included, I know this is just suggestions, and the word "should" is used in almost all of these, right? So it's just, it's suggestive is what it is. But I hate to think that everyone would have to put a park in or have to put open space in. In some developments, let's say there's wetlands and you have to leave some open spaces because you can't touch on those wetlands, right, for a lot of reasons, obvious reasons. Maybe that can be considered, those open spaces.
Well, they usually are. It's worth pointing out that we do require open space in our residential developments, so 25% minimum. That's in the zoning ordinance. Now, the idea with your comprehensive plan is that it's the guide, and then the zoning ordinance is the law that accomplishes what we're visioning in the comprehensive plan. So I don't necessarily want us to change anything here because what's in the zoning ordinance, because that's kind of the tail wagging the dog, as they say. But I would think that we want to say included instead of considered. I think, unless there's differing opinions, I think in general, we do want to see open space in our residential developments. I don't think it's just a consideration, I think it's an inclusion. I might agree that it doesn't need to go so far as parks.
I would also say shall, since it should, so, I mean, yeah.
And I don't think you'd find anyone who would say that they wouldn't think that it should be included, but maybe the word "parks" is too suggestive that the assumption would be that, "Oh, I have to put a park in," or "We have to put a park in."
Yes. So I think I'm hearing a consensus on the parks. Does it just come out entirely? Is there any room for saying, "Open space and some portion of usable open space"? Do we want to... Or just, "Open space should be provided," and take it on a case-by-case basis of whether that's usable open space or active recreation open space?
Usable's going to be something different to everybody.
Mm-hmm.
Some people just might want to hike through it, walk their dog through it, or go sit next to a tree, or in an open field, let alone, you know, be it a swing set or a horseshoe pit or tennis court.
So let me ask this question then, if you're trying to determine usable and whether something is usable or not. So say you had a bunch of wetlands in a development, and basically that's the only space that you could, or were planning to have as your open space was the wetlands, that really may not be usable. Are you going to say you've got to have more open space than that, that can be considered usable?
We do now. If the zoning ordinance does say that a minimum of open space, and of that minimum, a minimum of that has to be usable. And I think the intent there is that, so that all your open space isn't your wetlands.
And that's in the zoning ordinance?
It is.
So it doesn't really need to be stayed here, does it? Just open?
No, that's kind of what I'm saying. I don't want the zoning ordinance to guide what we say here.
Non-regulatory.
Yeah.
So I think we'd be fine with just open space.
Yeah.
But the ordinance would be scratch of marks.
Then I guess I have a question on number five. All internal streets as well as access routes should be paved. I know we have the paved thing going in, and I know we have the paved thing when you're so many lots, or they're such a size, but my memory is such that we allow a gravel road on a specific lot size and number of lots.
It's the number of lots, and it's up to a maximum of 13.
Okay. So can this stay like this with that regulation and the zoning ordinance, or not?
I think it can stay. It uses the word "should." We'll have specific situations where...
It's not.
It's not necessary. So I think as an overall statement, it's valid.
Yeah, that. You're going with that?
I second that.
All right. Well, I'm good with that, so. Mine was a question more than a position. Are we sticking to the residential, or are we jumping to the settlement? Are we going between the both? What did you like to do?
My preference might be just to park here for a minute.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments on the residential, basically, page six?
Well, yes.
There is, okay. Good.
I have concern with item number eight. Development should be designed to provide future road connections to adjacent developments. I obviously agree with the intent, I'm not quite sure as you're planning how you would get there. I mean, where I might foresee in my development a connection to undeveloped adjacent property might not be the next developer's idea of where to connect to mine. So even though I understand and I applaud the intent, I'm not quite sure how we might possibly get there ultimately.
Well, I... Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to, I guess, I'm on the other side of that fence than you would be, just because, so we have one applicant that came before us with a conceptual plan for a piece of property on M-59 that was owned by the Presbyterian Church. And basically, he has no way to connect to Autumn Woods.
Right.
Because it was never, there was never a connection contemplated there. Now, Autumn Woods did leave, I guess they have an emergency access into Heartland Woods, I think it's called, but then there's nothing to the other side. So say that residential portion of behind the river church develops, and there's vacant land to the west of there, and it would seem to me that if they developed that, I personally would be looking for them to leave some possible way to connect to the west, so that maybe it could connect to Hacker Road and have another, you know, way out of that development. So I think it's a good thing to try and encourage that. I mean, we don't always get it everywhere we want, but, I mean, as, these are just guiding principles, I think that's something I would be looking to try.
Well, to use your example, excuse me, to use your example, that, and pardon me because I don't know these developments off the top of my head by name, but that development is a gated community, and now we state as purpose the neighboring property, such as the church's property there, when they go and develop that, they should provide a connection to that gated community. If I were a property owner and specifically bought in that development because it was gated, you just undid the purpose of me buying there.
Right, and I don't think, and I'm not talking about connection that way. I'm talking more to the vacant, the possibility of future development, you know, further down the line to the west, rather than coming back to east to something that's already, you know...
But my point is...
They probably should have, when they thought of the one that's gated, and maybe they didn't, because they were putting gates in, think of leaving access to that, you know, to their west. You know, maybe that's a missed opportunity that should have been there, but...
Well, the only reason for my concern is, so often you will find a community, a development, that will come to the township board, not necessarily Heartland, but stated objection because all of a sudden, the internal driveways, roadways within the developments become now the natural thoroughfare for traffic. I could avoid the backup on M-59 at Hacker Road by cutting through these two developments and coming back out. And so all of a sudden, you hear or you see in the news petitions to close those streets, barricade them, so that it can't be a common thoroughfare for traffic. So I'm uncomfortable with the idea that as future developments occur, we necessarily propose and encourage that the road systems become connected.
Well, I would support leaving it in, but I think that in many cases, those situations are handled with easements that are already in place, or in the case of, I'll give Meadowview as an example, where the connections to the neighboring property were made, they were put in when the roads went in. So anybody that bought in there drove by a stubb road that stopped and went nowhere. And if you didn't think that it was going to connect to something, and didn't think to go to the township and ask, "Well, what could that be?", that's, I don't want to say "too bad," but that's, you didn't do your homework. So I think in a lot of cases, those things are handled with future developments, and I think we're talking about future... You're not going to go in and connect to a subdivision where there aren't easements. For example, the situation in Autumn Woods, the Presbyterian Church property cannot connect to Autumn Woods because there was never a way for it to happen. But if Autumn Woods had been built with a stubb, that stubb would have been there, the easement, with the granting of the access, and the easement would have been there, and the Presbyterian Church would have another access out. So I don't think you're going to go into these old neighborhoods and find it happening unless it already exists. But I think in the future developments that come, we should encourage it, just as we do in our commercial properties, where you can get facilities to connect parking lots, you know, the car wash and Leo's Coney Island connect type of a thing. It's another way of getting people around. It's access in a case of a residential neighborhood. If something were to happen where you had to get emergency vehicles in one way or another, there's another way. I agree with the traffic element, but I think we're not going to see connections made to old neighborhoods that don't already have the connection legally drawn. And whether this says anything about it or not, those existing neighborhoods, you've already got them. This would be for the future neighborhoods that come here and future connections. So that's why I would support it. But I don't think you can go into an old neighborhood and automatically disconnect because I don't think that's going to happen.
No, and I agree with you there. I'm good looking at the future ones.
Yeah. I don't know how you resolve that.
It's a case-by-case basis too, just like everything else on here. So where it makes sense, you know, encourage it, and where it doesn't make sense, then, you know, it's not required necessarily.
So in the example of the gated subdivision, for sure, that would be one that would stick right out, right, that we wouldn't, we wouldn't want traffic to come through.
Well, Dave has up on the screen right now, the Placid Way was an older development in the township that didn't have granted access to their road, and then Autumn Woods came up to it, and there's what you got. So they couldn't connect.
And that's an easy one to pick on, but, you know, as planners, at least maybe speaking for myself anyway, you look at that and you kind of cringe.
It's silly.
And this is a very easy example of what I think number eight is speaking to to some degree, is let's try to avoid too much more of that.
But I think it's an example of what I was trying to say. There is, on Placid Way, it's an older development that did not have that access granted to that neighboring parcel, and the neighboring parcel came in, and they didn't get access.
Yep.
So there was no access.
It's always difficult and angry and contentious to try to get it after the fact. And because, to what you're saying, you know, people have an expectation that if they live at the end of a cul-de-sac, they will always live at the end of a cul-de-sac. And to try to make a connection after they've been there for years is difficult, and fairly so. But we as planners, if we can plan for those connections, so that the expectation is always there, that there will be a connection someday, it's better to make the arrangements for it when we're planning these things than trying to go back and make it happen after the fact.
And we do it on our commercial properties.
Yes.
We put the stubb in.
Yes.
Well, and again, I mean, we have a requirement, after so many homes, you have to have more than one access point. And that's a way to provide, you know, for, I think this kind of flows into that, you know. If, I mean, Presbyterian Church probably isn't large enough, but if it was, but it could only get one access to M-59, you're limiting the amount of housing because you can't have a connection to any other access point, you know, so. So I do, I think more than anything, it's a public safety...
Yes.
...issue than anything else.
So we're leaving it in? Or we're not leaving it?
You asking me?
Well, I know you're...
I'm asking you.
I say leave it.
I really think a good planning practice is having these opportunities for these internal connections, and the biggest argument for it, as Larry mentioned, is public safety. The more opportunities to have these connections, hey, more opportunities for emergency responders to get to where they need to get to quicker, more efficiently. But at the same time, if there were a connection here, let's just keep picking on this one. Somebody in this development wanted to go visit someone in this development, and they were compelled to drive there, rather than going out onto very busy M-59 and then coming back in, having that connection provides, it's a safety thing, rather than making these movements out onto a high-speed, busy highway and causing more congestion and more opportunities for accidents, you're allowing for low-speed internal connection.
Less drivers appreciated.
There is something to be said for that.
Your tree, your tree.
What was it?
Your tree, your...
I've changed my mind.
So Dave, how would you handle that circumstance if the stub to the right were in, and there was a cul-de-sac, because it was required, and then at a future date, the stub on the left was added? Would you have had a stub coming off the cul-de-sac, or just had the understanding that if there is ever another development, that we would connect to it and maybe eliminate those cul-de-sacs?
You would want to get the easement one way or another. You know, a lot of times, these cul-de-sacs turn into traffic circles once the connection is made. And there's some examples of that.
I don't...
Yeah, I didn't want to speculate, but that's a very...
He has a...
Yeah, we could go zoom in on that one if you want, but, yeah, and that may change slightly one way or another, the way the layout of the, this is Heartland Woods, the way this maybe would get laid out. If, when that, if, to start over again, when that developer was in front of us with the plan, and the planning commission was requiring, or strongly suggesting anyway, a future connection, then maybe that slightly changes the way the streets lay out. But one way or another, you would want to get an easement at a location that made sense for a future connection. You know, over, just for reference, so now we're in San Marino Woods. This is, if you look at the plan and look at the legal description right through here, is an easement for a future connection to whatever may someday develop over here. So at least in that one case, there was some foresight of making that internal connection.
Down to Meadowview, because there is an example of two stubb roads there, and there's an example of a cul-de-sac that turned into a roundabout. There it is, right there. There's the first stubb road there in about the middle of this. Well, there's the roundabout that was a cul-de-sac that turned into a roundabout.
So the specs are well enough, obviously, to get emergency equipment around.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. But if you back up, now we just zoomed in, see the stubb road, it just turns.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes the stubbs actually get built, sometimes it's just an easement.
And there's another one at the end, down a little further too, right there.
Then sometimes they build a big fence in between.
So not in all cases do you even put a cul-de-sac at the end of a road? It could be just a stubb road, right?
That's just a small stubb road.
Obviously, in that case.
It usually has to do with how many houses, if you're going to build off of a stubb road, because then they're going to want a way to turn an emergency vehicle around if it's out there.
In this case, there aren't, there's one driveway on that stubb, and the other one has two driveways off of it, but they're very close to the main road. Those are just ways that it's been done within the past. Anything else on the residential section here?
Such an interesting topic.
Well, let's move on to the settlement area then, which would be the next page labeled page eight.
I, maybe I'll jump in quick on this one. What I noticed on this one, and I'm trying to figure out... What I noticed on this one, and I'm trying to figure out if there was a reason why, for any of these other policies, the ones that we have in front of us tonight and the ones that we don't, because they don't apply to residential, there's always kind of an opening vision statement. If you flip back to page six, you know, there's kind of an opening vision statement for what are the residential development policies. You know, that paragraph before you get into the numbered, and I, myself and my staff might be willing to take a crack at a vision statement, if for no other reason than consistency. But I think, and seemingly, most particularly in the settlement area, I think a vision statement's appropriate.
Sure.
I'd agree.
Okay. And I, so we are talking about residential, and the settlement area is kind of a hybrid because it allows for residential and commercial, like a lot of good quality downtowns do.
Can we really, and this should not be misinterpreted or taken the wrong way. I've always considered Heartland Village to be residential. It is two blocks of commercial. Whereas I look at Brighton and Howell, and I say they're commercial with a little residential. It's kind of like the Flit. I don't know that we're ever going to be anything more than a couple blocks of whatever we are. We're predominantly a residential downtown. Yeah, it's got the library in it, you know, church, but there's a vet clinic, you know. There just isn't a lot of commercial. I don't know that there ever will be.
Um, but do, would we be opposed to it being a little more commercial?
No, it's just a comment. Just what I think it is, will there ever, will it ever become anything?
If a hip new restaurant wanted to locate in Heartland Village, would we as a planning commission and a planning department be opposed to that necessarily?
I might be for the traffic.
Okay.
Well, the parking.
Fire and Flame was a restaurant
I didn't even
Maybe cool, but I don't know, is you're going to get the people down in the village to agree to have 75 cars in their streets at night. Well
Well, the best, the best downtowns in the world don't have enough parking, and that's
Well, I'm just looking at that Royal Oak situation right now.
Yeah.
With the, whatever, Vansetta's Garage or whatever. You know, he put the restaurant in there, everybody wanted it, it was super popular. Now he's buying up the lots to tear them down to put in parking lots, and the city's not letting. I don't know the details, that's all I'm saying. That's my point on that one.
So it's the parking?
I think
And you were
Tree
Traffic.
I, I think the traffic, the parking, I think
Because there's a tremendous amount of traffic that goes through that village now
Right, drive-through.
With schools there, there's going to park there. I understand. So your, your issue is the parking, not the traffic?
Probably. And I'm not sure it's a big issue, it's just a comment I made. If we want to leave it the way it is, that's fine.
Well, there's a comprehensive plan for the, for the settlement area, right?
Yes.
On-street parking.
I, yeah, but
How many parking spots were on that plan?
Oh, jeez. I could probably dig it up here.
Maybe not
That's probably not a bad guess.
Fifty?
On-street spaces. And I don't know if those are, if that's necessarily a net increase of 50, because there is on-street parking now, but it's not exactly striped, it's just sort of a free-for-all kind of thing.
Like a lot.
Um, it might be a stretch to call it a comprehensive plan for the village, mostly a streetscape plan.
Well
A nice streetscape plan.
Comprehensive, yeah.
But it doesn't get into things like, you know, the uses that would be allowed, or design guidelines, and, you know, things like that.
I mean, we can certainly leave it. It is just what I think our village is, and what I think it'll probably end up being in the end, will be more of a residential downtown. You might get a lawyer down there, you got a realtor, or an accountant, those types of things, more service-oriented. But as far as a commercial retail-oriented mix of businesses, I don't know that I could see that ever happening.
So then, in that vein, let me ask you this, so one of the notes
I don't want to talk in that way, so the whole table of us here.
I wonder if Brighton thought that at 1.2, though?
Brighton always was a downtown.
Yeah, their main street was
Always. When it originally went in, it was a commercial downtown. It also is the town, whereas our village is not our town.
I've heard it argued, though, and it was obviously well before my time, that before the expressway came through, that, that was the downtown, or so than it is now.
But that was a long time ago. I don't know if we're going to remove the freeway.
I haven't, I'll make a few calls.
Okay. So, as Heartland grows in population, and you're going to bring in services to service those people, restaurants, you know, and such, I mean, certainly, I think we all see that M-59 has that core. Not everybody's going to be able to afford M-59 frontage, nor do we necessarily want to make all of M-59 a commercial strip.
Exactly.
So wouldn't you see that maybe somewhere down the line, some of those commercial uses may move into some places? I mean, where, where's your next place you're going to put commercial uses?
Yeah, I don't know. I, it's just what I see as the downtown. If our vision is to make it this, that's fine, and I'm okay with that. It was just my, my comment to it.
Here's a note that I made, and let me ask if this sounds like something that is consistent or isn't consistent with what you're saying, Mr. Chair, is something along the lines of allow for flexibility in design and uses so as to promote reinvestment in the village.
Combined uses. How about combined use?
Yeah, we could say a mix of uses. But I guess what I'm saying is, would we want to allow for flexibility, rather than having a rigid set of standards, in an effort to promote reinvestment in the village? Or is maybe what you're saying, that the village is what it should be, and we're not necessarily looking to change it? Promote, have new investment, new
For many years, the downtown was, there was commercial on the lower level and apartments in the upper level. They could go back to that, because we've got a better infrastructure now, a better economy, and may even be more desire for that type of atmosphere, according to the report, too. But, I mean, so it could go back to that. It's just, you know, the economy kind of turned away, and once, started developing on a corner. But like Larry says, not everybody may not want to be down there. But there, many years, there was commercial downstairs and apartments upstairs. So where the Fire and Flame is, it was a restaurant for many, many years.
I remember it.
And I think our, our board does want to promote more reinvestment down there, and I think our board is kind of perhaps taking the first step in investing in some new sidewalks. We do have that village streetscape plan that we're hopefully incrementally going to implement. And I think all of those things are meant as a economic development stimulus, maybe on a small scale. But if the township can provide that infrastructure that makes it more of a desirable location in the hopes that the private side will come in and do reinvestment on there.
And I agree. And my comment was only into what I see the village is and what I see it probably would be. Reinvestment is people even fixing up their homes and them staying residential. That's reinvestment also. Or having a, an accountant or a bookkeeper buy a house and have their bookkeeping business in there, those types of things. I just didn't see commercial. Commercial likes a synergy of stuff, and there's not much there to be a synergy of anything in a commercial vein, I know. That's just my, you know, how I see it. You've got two blocks, you know, that's not going to create a lot of synergy of anything. But you can be small, personal services-type organizations, residential, those types of stuff. Maybe a restaurant would want to come down there. I just don't know where you're going to park 50 or 75 cars. But that's not the concern right at the moment about this. So, and if somebody came, it would be interesting to see how that could be accomplished. So
So is there, is there anything in here that would or would not change based on that thought? All right.
Well, I mean, it matters how deep of a discussion you want to get into it this time about the future of the village. You know, I, I think that, you know, that Avon could be different uses than it is right now. And, you know, would, if you allowed zero-lot-line buildings there, would, would it become desirable for businesses to locate down there?
I don't know that we don't, that allows zero-lot-line.
Well, I think you kind of do, because your setbacks are determined by adjacent structures. There's not too many zero-lot-line buildings there right now, so.
On, on the Avon blocks? At least from Kraus up to, say, School Street?
I mean, you got that one that the accounting, accountant is in, it might be zero-lot, I mean, on the sideline line, but I guess probably the only one. But that's a pretty deep discussion.
Yeah, I'd just leave it the way it is. I'm, you know, I'm not sorry I brought it up, because it's what I personally believe.
Well, and I guess
But I don't think that leaving it here is going to make it happen or not happen, because I would still support a lot of the things that are in here. I just don't think they're going to happen. That's all. I think it's going to turn into, it's going to be an evolution of what it is right now, with a couple blocks of that, some service industry-type stuff, and a lot of residential. But this isn't eliminating that option. This is just saying that we can create a retail-oriented mix of businesses.
True.
And if they want to come and make, if they see that as the marketplace, and want to invest their money in it, then let them come.
And I guess I need to remind myself, at least, of the focus of our discussion tonight is residential. So, you know, I think we're talking a lot of the commercial component of the village, but
But that's how the whole thing starts out, is commercial, commercial.
Right.
It doesn't talk about residential till later on.
Right, this portion of it, you mean, the settlement area?
This, number one is, number one starts out, town, commercial.
Yeah, but you can't separate the two
Right.
in the settlement, like you can elsewhere.
No, 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 I totally
It's necessary, yeah.
No, I'm just saying that that's what it starts out as.
Yeah.
It's, it looks like a priority, but it's not a priority. You know, it's not a one, two, three.
The development of the commercial is more, I think, important than the development of the residential, because of the, because of the impact that it would have. So that's probably why they, you know, they're coming up first and more often.
Is there anything that is or isn't stated in this policy that would be contrary to the findings of the residential market study as it pertains to the potential for new residential development in the village? And I'm not sure that there is. And there doesn't have to be. If what was agreed upon as the policy in 2011
Well, and
is still the policy going into 2015 and beyond?
I can still agree with you, everything that's on this page personally. I can't speak for anybody else. I just had a comment on, on what the village is, or what I thought it would be. And then number 10 is only a comment in that locate the off-street park to the rear buildings. That would be an interesting study to do down there at the village. But I, again, leave it. But they don't have backyards to begin with, so I don't know how you're putting the parking in it. There's, they're very, it's, it's a tight area.
Sure.
It's typical, it's typical small town.
Well, that's probably an opportunity, then, to make that statement more in line with the streetscape that we've got.
Right. And that's why I think this area is a bigger discussion. And maybe when we get into a total, I mean, we talked at the joint meeting about a revision of the master plan, larger scope than just the residential. I think that's when you start having these discussions, because it, it's bigger than just, you know, I think the time we're trying to spend here.
I mean, the village area may be worthy of its own sub-area plan sometime in the next few years.
Well, I can agree with the residential comments within the settlement area development policies.
Okay. If everyone else feels the same way, I
I'm good the way it is.
That's what I'm, okay. I feel like I see some nodding heads.
So noted.
Yeah, I'm not looking for a motion. That was meant to be the point of tonight's discussion, was to talk about the policies. And at the next meeting on the 20th, we are going to talk about the first few residential designations. So within the future land use plan, each one of these residential designations, estate residential, low suburban density residential, has a kind of a description, a narrative of what they are, what they mean. And so we're going to kind of take those, take those in chunks at the next few meetings and decide, okay, are those designations that were agreed upon in 2011, are those still the designations that apply moving ahead? So that will be what you'll be looking at in your packets for the 20th. And what I gave you tonight, this is just a souvenir for tonight. This map is the 2011 future land use map, and we just, we took a Sharpie and Sharpied those pink properties that we've been talking about for a while. The properties that, back in, I guess, May, the planning commission thought that those were properties that are open for future discussion of some sort of redesignation on the future land use map. So what we thought this might be a value of was showing where those pink properties actually fall on the existing future land use map, so you can see what their existing designations are. And I think we'll be talking more about this map, once we get to the point where we're actually talking about doing some redesignation, which we're not there yet. So for now, this is just an FYI, and everybody loves colorful maps, so there's one for you.
Okay, anything else on the item 8A on the agenda? Anybody have any other comments?
Uh, yeah, I just have questions. Sure. At least one. Why are we not discussing commercial? Is that just because we're not there yet? Or do we plan to tackle that in the comprehensive plan?
It's not part of this process.
Okay.
So, the, when we had a discussion with the township board back in April, what I, my understanding was the agreement was, was let's do an update and let's focus on the residential. Let's make sure that we're not missing the boat on the next great residential development because our future land use plan does not allow for it.
Okay.
So that's the process we're going through right now. Sometime in the next few years, we're likely to do a whole new comprehensive plan. And it's at that point that we'll do a pretty deep dive, I would think, into the commercial and the industrial and the, those types of land uses.
Anything else? Okay, no public, so we'll skip item nine, and we'll move to item 10, planners' report.
The part everybody was waiting for, me to talk.
That's it.
We are going to have the first annual, first-ever Heartland Family Winter Fest, January 31st, 2015. It's going to be at Heritage Park, which is the park on north side of M-59, a little bit west of Fenton Road.
It's the 8th?
January 31st, which I hope is a Saturday. Weather, if the weather cooperates, we want to have snowmen building contests, and the church next door, All Saints Lutheran Church, is going to open up their doors to host some indoor stuff. We're still hoping to have an ice rink, that's proven to be easier said than done. But we are moving forward with this. We are putting out the announcements to the public that we are going to have this event, and hopefully it'll be a big success, and it will grow on an annual basis and be a destination for Heartland. I'm guessing you are all well aware that the road millage passed on Tuesday, so job security for our DPW department, because they're going to, along with the planning department, I would think, and other departments, have a lot of work to do now, moving ahead, now that this millage has been approved. Now it's going through the process of Now it's going through the process of designing and engineering these road improvements and scheduling them and seeking bids and all those things that go along with that. As we've promised the voters, we want to get these improvements done sooner rather than later, so hopefully in the next three years. So certainly a lot more to come on that. Had a very preliminary meeting and I'm not sure if it's going to go anywhere, but I thought I'd at least mention it, a meeting with a commercial wind turbine manufacturer slash retailer who is going to some of the major commercial retailers, the Targets, the Myers, the Walmarts, but then also to major public landholders such as Heartland Schools, and making a sales pitch for a vertical access wind turbine, which is instead of a windmill, more the traditional wind turbine, these kind of spin around this way, kind of an egg beater in the sky sort of thing. And they're, they're a good size. It's a 50-foot turbine on top of a 100-foot pole, so you're talking 150-foot structure, which for reference, that's about as tall as our water tower. So right now, they, this particular manufacturer, who is based in Ann Arbor and they, this is, a lot of the components are made in Michigan, so Michigan company, going around to a lot of the local municipalities and just seeing what the requirements are and how open they may be to something like this. Certainly nothing formal has been proposed, but I guess I'm making you aware of it, if only because in our zoning ordinance right now, we have limited language on standards for wind turbines and the limits on the height is pretty short, but then it also says unless approved by the planning commission for something taller. So it's not out of the realm of possibility that they may be coming to us in the next, coming to you in the next few months or a year saying, how much taller can we go? So just, I guess, an FYI at this point. Continuing to work on the five-year parks master plan, the task force had their final meeting, at least for now, last Thursday and kind of prioritized the capital improvement projects proposed for the township parks, so that one's moving along. And I was going to mention that last Thursday, I had a chance to go to the MDOT Traffic Summit, which is MDOT and the Road Commission getting all the local municipalities together in a room at the Road Commission's office and just letting them know everything they did last year or this, you know, 2014 and what's on the docket for 2015. And that, what's on their docket may change slightly, at least on the Road Commission's side, if the township is able to get going on some of the road projects that are in a road improvement plan. But for the moment, both the Road Commission and the MDOT don't have any major projects scheduled in Heartland Township for 2015, other than just general maintenance. The big project for MDOT probably for the next couple of years is they're completely rebuilding the I-96 and US-23 interchange. And that's going to be pretty much their focus for Livingston County for the next couple of years. But I think that's a project that anyone who drives through there could agree is necessary. That's all I have for my planners' report.
Number, item 11, committee reports. Anyone have anything this evening?
I just had a question for Dave, I guess, and I spoke with James about this, I think I might even mention it, some of the joint meeting, about the idea of the DPW director coming to talk to the planning commission about the water system development ready presentation he gave to the board.
And I will fully acknowledge that that's something I wish I'd have done by now. The DPW has developed a readiness to serve analysis, which is looking at our existing water system and determining, you know, doing an analysis of what we have now, what it serves now and what it could potentially serve as far as new development in the future. And now is as good a time as any for the DPW director to come in and deliver what Larry tells me is a very dynamic and fascinating report, because I think it ties in well with what we're talking about tonight and for our next few meetings of potential for new residential development and a big part of that is infrastructure capacity. And so I want to do that sooner rather than later and hopefully in the next couple of meetings. And I appreciate Larry giving me the reminder again.
Anything else this evening? I could have a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Call those a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, nay, motion carries. We are done. Thank you and good night.